I'm going to call the City Council Caucus Meeting for June 8th, 2015 to order. We have one public hearing, if the clerk would read that.
Public hearing, number one, regarding an amendment to Chapter 86 of the Schenectady City Code regarding the Parks and Recreation Administration.
And this is simply deleting a section about the Center City Bureau which no longer exists, so not a major thing. Okay, item number one for original consideration.
Item number one, under original consideration, an ordinance re-appropriating the adopted 2015 budget.
Discussed in Finance Committee without objection on consent. Item number two.
Item number two, a resolution authorizing the city to enter into a contract with the New York State Division of Criminal Justices to secure GIVE grant funding.
Discussed in Committee without objection on consent. Item number three.
Item number three, a resolution authorizing the sale of 37 Lorain Avenue.
Discussed in Committee without objection on consent. Item number four.
Item number four, a resolution authorizing the purchase of 10 properties.
Also discussed in Committee without objection on consent. Item number five.
Item number five, a resolution authorizing the issuance of revocable permit number 593 to Speedway to replace an existing sign on the corner of the property at 229 South Brandiwine Avenue, Schenectady, New York.
Discussed in Committee without objection on consent. Item number six.
Item number six, a resolution authorizing the City of Schenectady to renew a HUD Home Investment Partnerships Consortium with the City of Troy and Town of Colony.
Discussed in Committee without objection on consent. Item number seven.
Item number seven, a resolution authorizing the City of Schenectady to settle a tax surcerary for 1273 Glenwood Boulevard.
Discussed in Claims without objection on consent. Item number eight.
Item number eight, a resolution authorizing the City of Schenectady to settle a tax surcerary for 631 Hamilton Street.
Also discussed in Claims without objection on consent. Item number nine.
Item number nine, a resolution authorizing the City of Schenectady to settle a tax surcerary for 1070 Briarwood Boulevard.
Also discussed in Claims without objection on consent. Item number 10.
Item number 10, a resolution recognizing to celebrate the 20th anniversary of the Rose Garden Restoration Committee and to honor David Gade for his contributions to the Central Park Rose Garden.
This will be taken out of order, Mr. Kosher will present that. Item number 11.
Item number 11, a resolution declaring the month of June as Gun Violence Awareness Month.
This will also be taken out of order, Mr. Mutiveren will present. And item number 12.
Item number 12, a resolution recognizing Sandra's Fine Jewelry as an outstanding local business.
Also out of order, Ms. Parazzo will present. And item number 13.
Item number 13, a resolution recognizing the 15th anniversary of the Ralph and Marjorie Kenny Center at Union College.
This will also be taken out of order, Ms. Porterfield will present that. Item number 14.
Item number 14, under Contract and Supply, a resolution awarding a bid for building demolition and debris removal.
Discussed in Committee without objection on consent. Item number 15.
Item number 15, a resolution authorizing a contract with New England Waste Services of Main Inc. for sludge transportation and disposal.
Also discussed in Committee without objection on consent. Item number 16.
Item number 16, a resolution authorizing the sale of 1249 Fourth Avenue.
This was discussed in City Development and Planning this evening, without objection on consent. And item number 17.
Item number 17, a resolution authorizing the sale of 1595 Foster Avenue.
Also discussed in City Development and Planning tonight, without objection on consent. Is there anything else to come before the City Council Caucus? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Kosher, second amendment, Ms. Parazzo, all in favor?
Aye.
I will now call the City Council Meeting to order for June 8th, 2015, and ask you to rise through the invocation by the Reverend James Bookout of Bridge Christian Church.
Father bless this meeting with your divine intelligence. Help us to make the best of our own intelligence to seek your wisdom, your guidance, your courage, and your strength. We pray Jeremiah 29:7, that we might seek the welfare of our city. Help us to be wise in the decisions we make, for the good of those who have placed their trust and confidence in our leadership. I pray for the agenda set before this City Council today. Give them the assurance of what pleases you. Grant them the insight to lead with integrity. I pray that their decisions may reflect what is right and what is good. Grant this council the ability to work together in harmony, even when there is disagreement. Send angels to guard our city gates from allowing evil to come in our city. Grant us the humility to seek your will. And when we leave this meeting this evening, let our elders in the gates feel a personal peace and joy of the Father in heaven. And the decisions that we made, we might know we've made them properly and righteously. We pray this prayer in the name of Jesus Christ, our Savior and Lord. Amen.
I'm going to ask David Gade to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if the clerk would call the roll.
Ms. Parazzo.
President.
Ms. Porterfield.
Here.
Mr. Ferrari is excused, his flight was delayed in Philadelphia. Mr. Kosher.
Yes.
Mr. Riggi.
It's here.
Mr. Mutiveren.
Present.
Ms. King.
Present. All right, we have four out-of-order resolutions. The first is recognizing the Rose Garden Committee and David Gade. Mr. Kosher.
Yes. I have Governor of the District, David Gade, please come inside. Think we brought in the rain just in time. Please come right up in here, folks. Everybody, come on in. We're both getting our haircuts together at Grassil's Barber Shop, so we're looking good. Grassil's Barber Shop, 2562 Albany Avenue, Schenectady, New York. Madam President, if I may.
You have the floor.
Resolution recognizing the 20th anniversary of the formation of the Central Park Rose Garden Restoration Committee and the contribution of David Gade. Whereas in 1959, the city first placed a rose garden in its crown jewel, better known as Central Park. Whereas through care and planning, the garden reached its peak in the 1970s with an estimated rose population of 7,500 bushes, receiving the American Rose Society's Outstanding Public Garden Award. And whereas the All-American Rose Garden Selection Group added the garden to its select list of 125 nationwide test gardens meant to display new rose varieties before they were released to the general retail market. Whereas the heady days of gardening excellence were difficult to maintain with the demographic shifts experienced by the area in 1980s and 1990s, and the garden decorated significantly. Whereas in 1995, several concerned citizens and rose enthusiasts branded together to form the Rose Garden Restoration Committee, with David Gade serving as its first president from 1995 until 2005. And whereas, under Mr. Gade's direction, the garden has returned to its former glory, once again achieving outstanding garden status with All-American Rose Selection Group, while also becoming an asset to the community at large. Whereas throughout Mr. Gade's relationship with the organization as president and as operation supervisor, the Rose Garden Restoration Committee has worked tirelessly to make the beauty of flora accessible to all. Now therefore be resolved that the Mayor, Gary R. McCarthy, and the City Council do hereby pause in their deliberations to recognize the Rose Garden Restoration Committee's 20th anniversary and their contributions of the committee member, David Gade, in providing this city with a priceless asset. Madam President, I move this?
All right, moved, seconded by Ms. Parazzo, all in favor? Aye. Congratulations.
Well, I retired from GE in 1994, and my second job started that summer. And let me tell you, working on the second job is a lot better than working on the first job. And we've been endowed with a lot of people here on our committee that have talent and initiative and help and ideas to make this all happen. I was the rose guy, but it takes a team effort to do it, and our team did it. And I thank my team, and I thank the city for the garden, and Charlie Brown, who started the garden and was my mentor.
Neat. Congratulations.
I would like to offer it out to a special presentation by our Mayor, Gary McCarthy. Mr. Mayor.
And David, you're extremely modest in terms of all the time, effort, talent that you've brought to the Rose Garden, motivating people, teaching people, and really turning that into such a...it's just pretty. It's nice. It reflects so well on our community. But the highest honor the city can bestow on an individual is to have the mayor designate that individual as a patroon. And so it's with a tremendous amount of pride and just sincere thanks on behalf of the city's residents for your time and effort, and so I'm proud to present you and designate you a patroon of the City of Schenectady tonight.
Thanks again. I never expected this, but everything has been wonderful. I can't say anymore.
Dave is a very modest guy. Certainly, this is an award, I think, certainly the mayor, and certainly the council, and everyone from the city is a great recognition for us. I think many of us would have thought 20 years ago we wouldn't be standing here today. Certainly, as Dave said, his leadership and his dedication to the garden really shows. And I think all of us have become great friends, great family, and what we do is really something we truly love. And I think it's also evident that the community has come to support us. And I think recently we were recognized as the second most popular destination in the city of Schenectady. And you've got to realize, you know, it's a great love that I think everyone has had for the Rose Garden. Celebrating our 20th anniversary and our fundraising coming up in two weeks on June 19th is something that we do, and we do it really just because we love doing it. Sometimes we have some difficulties, but definitely I think the community has come to us, you know, corporations have come to support us. Certainly, Mr. Carl, who was kind of our biggest benefactor, and certainly Charlie Brown, all these people kind of make this community how great it is. I think a lot of people, you've seen the resurgence in Schenectady, certainly the Rose Garden has been part of that and everything else that's been going on. So I think, again, I thank everyone for supporting us.
Would you also introduce the rest of your committee and also maybe tell the public a little bit more about your fundraiser?
Okay, all right. Well, Dave Gade is our garden operations supervisor. His wife Sharon is our secretary. Yolanda Matura is our vice president. Larry Matura was our treasurer, is now a board member. Julie Stone is one of our board members. Matt Quavis, I'm our current president, and this is Pam Perlman, one of our other board members. And also is probably one of our lead person for grant writing and getting us a lot of the kind of corporate sponsorship that we've been able to, you know, get over the last several years. Our fundraiser is our 20th fundraiser. It's being held at Riverstone Manor on June 19th. It's at 6:00 p.m., Friday, June 19th, at 6:00 p.m. Because it is kind of our 20th anniversary, we're going with a Roaring Twenties theme. If anybody wants an invitation, go out to our website and either call the number or just send us a contact through our email that's listed there. And we're looking forward to it. It's going to be a lot of fun.
It's always a nice event.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations again. Okay, the next ceremonial resolution is on Gun Violence Awareness Week, and we'll ask Mr. Mutiveren to present that. You have the floor.
So, resolution declaring the month of June as Gun Violence Awareness Month. Whereas the City of Schenectady, like many other in the state and the nation, is sadly familiar with the impact of gun violence. And whereas the media may cover national tragedies such as Newtown, Aurora, and Columbine, but there's ongoing tragedy unfolding on local streets across the country. And whereas gun violence and the resulting injuries and murder typically increase during the summer months. And whereas the state of New York took the lead in 2013 by instituting the first ever Gun Violence Awareness Month. And whereas while there are many difficulty approaching to address these issues at hand, the goal of Gun Violence Awareness Month is to promote greater awareness of both gun violence and gun safety, to promote responsible gun ownership, and to bring citizen and community leaders together to discuss ways to make our community healthier and safer. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor, Gary R. McCarthy, the City Council do hereby pause in their deliberation to proclaim the month of June as Gun Violence Awareness Month in the City of Schenectady, and encourage its citizens to wear orange on June 10th in support of raising awareness for this issue. Madam President.
Okay, it's been moved, seconded by Ms. Porterfield, all in favor? Aye.
On behalf of the Police Department, we accept this proclamation and thank you, but more importantly, I will thank the City Council for presenting it, more importantly, to bring the awareness to the community. This is a national month of recognition of gun awareness and gun violence, trying to suppress the gun violence that is kind of nationwide at this point. The biggest message I have to get out there is this community problem, that we need to need the information from the community to help us and assist us. So, as the saying is, if you see it, report it. If there's anything that doesn't look right, it probably isn't, please give us a heads-up. Gun safety at home for those legal gun owners is as important as to make sure no one accesses it, that it could be a tragedy in the makings. We also tonight have on the agenda a GIVE grant. It's kind of was not planned this way, but it's part of our gun violence suppression. It's sponsored by DCGS and gives the city funding for a couple officers, a couple detectives, if you would. We've asked Detective Durkowski from the Police Department to come up here with us tonight and to, just as a good-looking guy up here at the podium with me. But he is the boots on the ground, if you will. He's one of the two officers assigned to the unit that really work specifically towards gun violence and the reduction of any major crimes that we get that way. So I just want to recognize him. And the other officer is Detective Bernard, and they're the work they do, really kind of what this proclamation says. So, thank you. Thank you, City Council. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief Seaver. The next out-of-order resolution is for Sandra's Fine Jewelry, Ms. Parazzo. You'll present that. You have the floor.
Thank you. This is a resolution recognizing Sandra's Fine Jewelry as an outstanding local business. Whereas Sandra Stevens took the opportunity to invest in herself and her community when she made the decision to open Sandra's Fine Jewelry in the fall of 1997. And whereas, as a demonstration of her ongoing commitment to Schenectady, she later purchased her current location at 1624 Union Street in Schenectady. And whereas through hard work and sheer force of will, Sandra has grown her business from its beginning, a dining room table full of jewelry, which, who doesn't like that, right? To its current state as an anchor store of the Upper Union Street Business District. And whereas, as of June 20th, 2015, during the heart of the Neighborhood Strawberry Festival and in partnership with her son Anthony, Sandra Stevens is proud to announce that Sandra's Fine Jewelry will unveil the new Sandras, and whereas, the results of which should have a profound impact on the look and feel of Upper Union Street with a beautiful outdoor patio and refreshment bar, but also add to the vibrancy of the store with 16 new displays. And whereas Sandra's Fine Jewelry is a wholly woman-owned business and is also a community leader, as demonstrated by its involvement with local charities such as the Animal Protective Foundation, the Boys and Girls Club, and Bellevue Women's Center. And whereas through its charitable acts and its commitment to remain in Schenectady, Sandra's Fine Jewelry truly is a shining jewel and treasured asset of the city. Now therefore be it resolved, the Mayor, Gary R. McCarthy, and the City Council do hereby pause in their deliberations to recognize Sandra's Fine Jewelry as an outstanding local business and to wish it the very best of luck in continuing its operations here in Schenectady. Madam President, I move this?
All right, it's moved, seconded by Mr. Mutiveren, all in favor? Aye.
Our wonderful Mayor, Madam President, and distinguished members of the council, you humble me, and we are very honored to stay in Schenectady. We were heavily courted this year to move to Saratoga, and rumors were abound that we were taking over the old Frank Adams Jewelry Store, and we decided to stay. And my wonderful partner here, Anthony, said, "Let's remodel and get into the 20th Century Mom with all these young people." So we gutted the whole store, and we put in a wine bar and a patio, and it's absolutely stunning, and we hope that you'll come and see us. But more than that, as we kick off our devotion to Sunny View Hospital shortly, Proctors, Family and Child Services, Boys and Girls Club, Ellis Medicine Breast Care Center, we're very humbled to have a part in this. We are now going to partner with Sick'em, and we're very excited about this. And I want you all to know and to go home tonight with one thing, not that we're anything, Anthony and I, but now you'll see us with Sick'em. And at Strawberry Festival and through all our advertising starting this week, we're asking all of our friends to come up on Strawberry Festival, thousands of us, and help us fund the school lunch program, which is the summer lunch program. Because last year, 65,000 meals were served locally to our inner city. And I have a son that I can't live without, and he was a child at one time. So now I have my soldier clothes on, and I'm saying to everyone, "Come up, bring us a check all year long, and bring some food during the summer festival," which is this coming Saturday, well, next Saturday, the 20th. Bring a canned good, peanut butter, jelly, fruit. And if you all go home tonight and you get the word on the social media, which I don't do, Anthony does, we're going to have a wonderful summer for these children. And we are madly in love with Sick'em, and we're very honored to partner with them. And we're nothing without the people that support the charities that we love. And this is my wonderful son.
Mom does the speaking, I sell the diamonds.
And he goes to breast cancer awareness as one of the few men, and he sits with the children, and he's a good kid. So just continue to support our charities. If you support our jewelry store, we can support our charities. Oh, Toys for Tots! Well, that's a kind of a given. We collect over 15,000 toys through our store. We have been doing it over 10 years. Mr. Kosher's one of our big partners. And this year, again, we'll be out there with our bikers, and we'll be out there with all of our people at Stuff the Truck the day after Black Friday, and we'll be honored again for my son, who manages over 80 boxes in the city by himself. So, yes, Toys for Tots! We're a little more well-known for that than Sick'em, but give us a couple years. God bless you all.
Thank you for all you do. All right, and our last out-of-order resolution is recognizing the Kenny Center. Ms. Porterfield.
Thank you, Madam President.
You have the floor.
A resolution recognizing the 15th anniversary of the Ralph and Marjorie Kenny Volunteer Center at Union College. Whereas the Ralph and Marjorie Kenny Volunteer Center is a result of a generous donation from Mrs. Marjorie Kenny, the widow of Mr. Ralph Kenny, a 1929 graduate of Union College. And whereas Mrs. Kenny made the gift with strict instructions that the funds were to be used for the benefit of Union College and the City of Schenectady. And whereas, under the direction of Dr. Gretchen Hathaway and her successor, Angela Tatum, the Kenny Volunteer Center has grown to provide meaningful volunteer opportunities for the students of Union College. And whereas the Kenny Center works to bridge the divide between Union College and its host city, the City of Schenectady, by encouraging students to interact with members of the community. And whereas students coordinate and host community festivals such as U Care Day, and work with the Kenny Center to provide hundreds of students with opportunities to participate in the John Calvin Toll Day of Service. And whereas the impact of this organization is felt citywide through its participation with the Homework and Skills Development Program, the Literacy Partnerships Program, Safe House, the Damian Center and Home Furnishings, and the Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program, to name only a few. And whereas the Kenny Center's work received national recognition when it appeared on President Barack Obama's 2013-2014 Higher Education Honor Roll for the Community Service. 1,307 students volunteered 10 hours or more of community service each week, resulting in 27,500 hours of community service. And now, excuse me, now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor, Gary R. McCarthy, and City Council do hereby pause in their deliberations to recognize the ongoing contributions of the Ralph and Marjorie Kenny Center, and to thank its director, Angela Tatum, and the students of Union College who have worked so hard to make the Kenny's Dream a success. Madam President, I move the resolution.
All right, seconded by Mr. Mutiveren, all in favor? Aye. Thank you.
And I'd just like to add a few comments. First of all, it's certainly my pleasure to be friends with these two ladies here and to have gotten to know Janet very well, and she is really a great part of what goes on in the Kenny Center and keeps it all together. I had the recent opportunity to go to the 50th Anniversary Appreciation Dinner, as did Ms. Parazzo, and I was just so thrilled to hear what the students do and motivated by what they do, thinking, wow, it's just amazing what they do in the community and what they bring to the table. So what we put in the resolution was just a small list of all the things you do, we realized that, but in order to do everything, we'd have to have like double-sided, okay? In 10-point font or something, so we couldn't get them all there. So, you know, we realized that, but there's a number of other things I just want to mention. I know that you partnered with Big Brothers and Big Sisters, Schenectady ARC, to host a college experience for individuals with developmental disabilities. The community pre-orientation where you have students that come in to come into the community when they first arrive here. And so there's just a number of things. Now, the Kenny Center is just a building, and it would only be that if it were not for all the hard work that you do and the students who I know are getting ready to do their finals, so they couldn't be here tonight. So, thank you for all the work that you do. We can't say enough about how we appreciate it, and just continue to do it, and I'm just thrilled to know all of you ladies. Thank you very much.
Would one of you make introductions?
Sure, I'm Gretchen Hathaway. I'm the Chief Diversity Officer, but I was the founding director of the Kenny Center, which at the time was a little building with three programs. All of the advancing program has been actually done by Angela Tatum and Janet Sweeney. Angela Tatum is our director now of the Kenny Community Center, and Janet Sweeney is the assistant director. Both started out as administrative assistants, aye aye them both, and they're just doing an amazing job with the outreach with the community. Want to thank all of you for recognizing the work that we've done. I mean, the VITA program alone, the tax program, over a million dollars now that it has given back to the city and back to the citizens in our city. I think about the youngsters who, I remember them this high, they're now in colleges all over, including Union College, Schenectady, SUNY system. They're at Penn State, they're at MIT, I'm just naming the ones off the top of my head. So to watch them go from young babies practically to thinking about college and coming on our campus, and I honestly know that our students get just as much out of it going into the city. So I want to thank you very much for the honor.
Thank you for all the work you do.
Yes, thank you, everyone. We're very proud to be part of the Schenectady community. It's always a privilege to partner with the city and the not-for-profits who are doing so much good work. So, thank you. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Thank you again. All right, we have one public hearing, which is the amendment to Parks Chapter Eighty-Six, which is, as I said, deleting the Center-City Bureau. I have no one signed up to speak, so I'm going to declare that public hearing closed and we will move on to the approval of the minutes from May twenty-seventh. Mr. Riggi, seconded by Mr. Mutavaren, all in favor? Aye. Communications and petitions.
Communications presented to the City Council for Monday, June eighth, 2015. Under official from the Mayor, a list of appointments dated June eighth, 2015. A letter from Paul LaFon, Director of Water, Wastewater, recommending the award of the Sludge Transportation and Disposal Contract to New England Waste Services of Maine Inc. A letter from David Frunk, Director of Operations, recommending the award of the demolition and debris removal of select vacant buildings in the city of Schenectady pursuant to the HUD 108 Loan Guarantee Demolition Program to Jackson Demolition Services. Under general, there are none; under petitions, there are none.
Thank you. Committee reports. Ms. Porterfield.
For Health and Recreation, we know that we're doing the ongoing park inventory, so I just want to announce that tomorrow, that all the park inventories are done. So I think I may announce that we were coming up on that at the last council meeting. So tomorrow at six PM in Room One Ten, the Recreation Advisory Commission will be meeting to discuss and to come up with the recommendations to submit to the Mayor and to the City Council. So I know the public is invited. I don't know that they can necessarily make comments because they've already done their work, but the people that are interested in the, from the public that are interested certainly are welcome to be there tomorrow, six PM, Room One Ten, to hear about the discussions that they have for the various parks throughout the city. Thank you.
Very good. Any other committee reports? Okay. If not, we will move to privilege of the floor related to the legislative agenda. I have no one signed up to speak on that, so I'm going to declare that portion of the meeting closed and I will entertain a motion to approve the legislative agenda. Mr. Kozier, seconded by Mr. Mutavaren, all in favor? Aye. We will now move to privilege of the floor regarding city business. I have eight people signed up to speak. The first is Anthony Carata.
Good evening, Mr. President, Councilwoman President. All right, before I start speaking, I want to give a couple praises, mail to our police department who handled that situation there in Michigan Ave. I'm glad they handled it before it got out of hand because that could easily have gotten out of hand. Also, Saturday, I came by a little bit in the afternoon, checked out a little of the art fest for the children. I'm glad that community came out, be able to socialize with some of the programs and the organizations for families. I'm glad about that. Now, what I want to talk about is, on Facebook, I get periodically updates from our government. And one of them, I was reading very cautiously. It was about, Ms. Porterfield and another councilperson, about affordable housing in Hampton Hill. Now, I can understand that the Council and the Mayor wants to legalize the city in different neighborhoods like Hampton Hill, Vale, Placent, it's been plagued with violence for quite a while. Now, as a resident of Hampton Hill, I feel, no, I strongly feel that the affordable housing is the wrong idea to legalize the city. Mainly Hampton Hill and that corner there where Albany and Hill is. What I feel that needs to legalize the city is what Mr. Riggi has been running on since 2003 and be running again. The zero-talent policies. The attack and the tackle of the gang, the drugs, the tagging with the graffiti, what have you. Because anybody knows that most of the violence we have, probably gangs and drugs, come from New York City. Now, I'm not saying everybody from New York City come up here bad or people from here going down to visit the city is bad. What I'm saying is that there's a drug pipeline. Mainly drugs and the drug dealers, users, gang members, all come from New York City up here and then from here it goes out to other states and cities in the nation. Now, we need zero-talent policies enacted now because seeing as people's safety and lives are in jeopardy of just walking around the neighborhood with dogs or family members or seeing that. Because one time up there a corner, I forget the corner there, it was a little church, Hampton Hill Fellowship. I went there one time, one night, and I was walking on the street, there was a drug dealer hanging out by the convenience store there. Now, he looked at me, I didn't look, I looked at him, I didn't see nothing, I just walked by. Now, affordable housing, that's not the idea. We need more good ideas like zero-talent policy enacted now in order to legalize the neighborhoods. That's what we need, not affordable housing. That's the wrong idea. Because that just gets at the mindset of people's thing would take advantage of the system. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Rodriguez.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here for two simple reasons. One is, you know, the car wash on State Street's been doing an outstanding job in decorating the front and back on Albany Street and the front of State Street. And I love the way they've been just taking care of it, but the city needs to step up a little more on keeping the other parts of the neighborhood a little cleaner. Like for instance, you see they throw some furnitures or whatever and the sanitation department seems to avoid certain items. And one thing, there's household items are supposed to be picked up. Second thing, I approach Mrs. King on this and I think a couple of members, for my grandson, a couple of months ago, I was getting gas at JP Mart on Altamont Avenue. And my grandson, who was three at the time, who just turned four, asked me across the street, asked me, Papa, what's that sign? What's that candy? There is several, more than several signs advertising cigarettes. I thought there was an ordinance that we're not supposed, that they're not supposed to advertise base cards or anything on front, it's on, it's on, almost basically on the street. And I think it's a terrible thing because we complain about selling Lucy's and we complain about everything, but here's one store, I noticed around the city that a lot of stores are in compliance, but this store isn't. I don't know who to talk to to find out how come these cards or these advertisers are not taken down. Because our children are subjected to this. I don't see why we have ordinances if we're not going to follow them. I mean, we can be harassed by code enforcement on something simple, like they notice, I don't know what you want to say, a piece of wood that's rotted, but everybody here, I'm pretty sure, travels down Altamont because they're just paving that street now and you can't see them signs? I mean, they hit you right in your face. All I'm thinking about is the children. And we're trying to prevent them, how come they advertise? Thank you.
Thank you. Marva Isaacs.
Madam President, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. On June twenty-seventh, there will be the Hamilton Hill Neighborhood Association Block Party. And it will change in the venues, will be on Page Street. And everyone is invited. Thank you. It starts from twelve to five. Thank you.
Thank you. A representative from Quest. You didn't, oh Judy, okay, you didn't put your name down here, Judy, so.
These are two of my good friends hiding. This is Lexus. This is Anthony. I am Judy. I founded Quest twenty-three years ago. Our budget's ninety thousand dollars for everything. I take no salary. We have taken a lot and cleaned out the human feces, the needles, the drug detritus, the garbage. Kevin Burmaster brought his plow down State Street up to Quest and plowed the field two separate times. Burmasters have brought in topsoil, fertilizer, compost, and plants. These kids here are trying to run, what? What are we running, guys? A vegetable garden. Okay? Peppers. You're not any help. Corn, flowers. This woman's, this girl stood by me when a young man threw a stone through the window of my car and narrowly missed my head. And she waited with me till the police came and gave evidence. These are the kind of kids we're trying to raise. We would like to buy the lot for what we can afford. The biggest danger right now is they step on the plants when they water. We have a community that is coming out from every corner you can think of to help, to plant people I never knew in my life chasing me down the street. Can I help? This is a source of pride to the community. Come on, say something. What are you going to say if we get the lot?
Thank you for the lot.
She's a talker, that's why I brought her. Oh, well, men are always quiet when it comes to important things. We're running a chili, macaroni and cheese and dessert bake-off in July. Contest. I'm one of the judges, there are two of the judges, and we're doing this in association with Chris Gibbs, open house. Come on down. We do everything for free. We charge nothing. Thanks for listening. Bye-bye.
Thank you. P.D. Vorus.
I'm P.D. Vorus and I live in the city, across from City Hall. This is my neighborhood. It's been over a year now since one night after one of these meetings, I was attacked. I was kept from being able to enter my apartment building and when I came across the street to get help, I was followed by this non-verbal attacker who had already wet his pants. Fortunately, Mr. Ferrari? 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 I'm trying to think, I'm trying to think cars. Yeah, that's the car guy, yeah. He came to my rescue, he took, you know, the guy took one look at him and he left. But, and after that, I checked with Chief Gellerada at the Fire Department and I said, if I had had pulled the fire alarm box, would that have been all right? And that would have gotten me all kinds of help? And would it have been okay with you? And he said, in this instance, that would have been fine. Within six months, black plastic bags are over every single firebox in the community. They have not been replaced. They were workable, but they've been, so now they're not available. I have been the victim of intense harassment and violence and other criminal activities in the last couple of months, even damage to my car. I have tried to report it to the police. In one instance, they came, they will not take a report from me. And I offered a piece of evidence to the policeman, he said, put it back, somebody dropped it and they'll probably come back for it. So because of that, I put in written form what has been happening to me to the last, for the last couple of months. I tried to give it to the police department, they will not accept. Here's a copy of the report I tried to give today to the police department. There's one for each one of you. They will not accept it. And when I don't know where to turn to get help, that is complete tyranny. And I think maybe your favorite jewelers around here ought to start making some Carnelian ankle bracelets for your convicted people of influence peddling. Here's another document. Mr. Kozier, these are also for you too. You are a councilman and you are, he's being very disrespectful to me by not taking one. Yeah, the other one you wouldn't take, you passed it along. And so those are for you. You own that as well. And I think this is nothing but an addendum to what has preceded in the past. I have other things to say, but because I couldn't remember the name of that car, I lost time. Talk to you later.
Thank you. Mohammed Haifaz.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. My name is Mohammed Haifaz and I live in Schenectady. City residents have been asking why we don't have, we still don't have a host agreement signed with the casino developer. Mr. Mayor, you provided us with a short answer, saying that we are getting money from the state and that New York State didn't require an agreement. Like Schenectady, the Town of Tyre and Seneca County is also getting money from the state. However, the town supervisor signed a detailed and binding agreement with the casino developer. Town and city officials around the country realize that there will be casino adverse impact and these officials acted to protect their citizens and their towns by requiring the developer to pay for all the costs of direct and indirect impacts caused by the casino. As a property, as a property taxpayer and a resident of Schenectady, I don't want to pay for any costs and expenses in connection with the increase of use of city infrastructure, the police department, the fire department, the ambulance, social and other services because of the casino. As a property taxpayer and a city resident of Schenectady, I don't want to pay for any costs and expenses of the additional facilities, equipment, and employees or any costs related to public health, safety, welfare, addictive behavior, and quality of life issue caused by the casino. Mr. Mayor, you didn't seek a binding agreement from the casino development to pay for all of this. Other towns that signed agreement with their casino developers are getting millions each year to pay for all of this and are eliminating a lot of expenses to their taxpayers. Mr. Mayor, when we elected you, it was because residents thought you will look after our interests, you will negotiate the best deals for us, you will try to reduce our property tax burden, you will side with us and not take the side of an out-of-town casino developer. With this casino project and without signing a binding agreement with this developer, you don't seem to have accomplished any of that. Now I ask you, Mr. Mayor, why should we vote to reelect you? Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Gibbs.
My name is Chris Gibbs, I'm community leader and founder of the Chris Gibbs Foundation. I actually have a couple topics. The first topic I wanted to address was the situation with the lot in Quest. First of all, I used to pass by that lot every day and as Judy said, it was riddled with needles, trash, dirty diapers. And it seems as if the city waited for Judy to get the lot plowed and then they wanted to try to take ownership, which I feel wasn't fair. And I also feel that it wasn't fair that Judy reached out to Ed Kozier a number of times and he handled the situation terribly. He didn't return voicemails, he didn't return emails, and multiple people reached out to him, multiple people that I know personally, but we're not going to really get into that. And also, I wanted to thank Vince Riggi because it seems that, now me personally, I just started keeping tabs on who's who and trying to follow people. And I've noticed that every time there's something going on in the community, the issues that City Council won't address, I notice that Vince Riggi is always on top of it. And I always notice that his name is in the mix. So I just wanted to come and personally thank him for showing that type of concern. And you look at a woman like Judy, Judy's been working with these kids for years. I'm only twenty-seven years old and she's been working with people that's older than me since they were kids. And I feel that Judy changed more lives in the city of Schenectady than a lot of people. And I feel that Judy changed more lives in the city of Schenectady than a lot of people that has been on City Council, and has the power to make changes, which is sad. I think we need more people such as herself who actually cares for the people of the town in place, because honestly, the people of the town, they're not satisfied. I feel that all the work is being done downtown. If you look, like, Not Terrace is like the, pardon me, um, Not Terrace is like the wrong side of the tre, of the train tracks. When you go west, you see million-dollar buildings, you see business, you see life. But then when you go east, it's nothing. Like, me and a team of my guys actually get up every weekend, and we go to Jerry Burrell Park, we went to Yates Village, and we clean up. We actually clean the streets, we don't get paid. That's just what we do, because we care about the community we live in. Now, I'm from Brooklyn, and Brooklyn where I live, I live in New York, I used to live in, I'm New York City Housing Authority, Lending Projects. We had workers that actually came out and cleaned every day. I think that if we had a few people like me that were paid city workers, put about six or seven people, they'll be able to clean this whole city. Or as a matter of fact, how about we go in front of these bodegas? You know, when you drive by those, when you drive by those bodegas and you see those guys? Even though those guys are committing crimes, they're young guys, and they wanna work, and they just have no guidance. Why don't y'all come and recruit them, and give them jobs? That way you'll be able to kill multiple birds with one stone. I have other issues, but I'm running out of time, but I just wanted to thank you guys for hearing me out.
Thank you. Mary McLean.
Good evening, my name is Mary McLean, I live in the city. I want to address the issue of beautification and the new sign at Ellis Hospital. And when I take a position here at this microphone, it is done from an educated perspective. In the case of beautification, I have been taking flower arranging classes for the past 25 years. In one of my very first classes, the teacher said to the students, don't just look at a tree, try and find the prettiest branch on the tree to make your arrangement. And I have been conditioned to look for beauty, and I found it at the corner of Knott Street and Rosa Road until the city let Ellis Hospital destroy the site. Whoever signed off on that ugly project owes the people of the Goose Hill neighborhood an explanation. Beautification was not on anyone's radar when the project was proposed, designed, and approved. Why would the city allow the hospital to expand a parking lot smack in the middle of prime real estate when the hospital was simultaneously building a five-story parking garage just a few feet away? As if that wasn't bad enough, a metal guardrail was installed around the lot. Guardrails belong on the highway, not in a primary residential area of the city. That corner went from beautiful to a cheaply showy mess. I saw the initial picture for the project. The finished product does not look like the picture because the background conditions were not included. Things such as a guardrail, parked cars, enlarged parking lot, and so on. Someone either wasn't paying attention or got hoodwinked on the project. The new Ellis Hospital sign degrades rather than enhances the neighborhood. That is not what the comprehensive plan is all about. Council members may work hard, but they do not work well. Mediocrity is the mantra in this administration.
Please summarize.
If you don't believe me, go to my street and see what the city is doing to it now. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no one else signed up to speak, so I'm declaring this portion of the meeting closed. We'll move to miscellaneous business of the council. Okay, Ms. Porterfield.
Thank you, Madam President. As many people know, for Memorial Day, there, as part of the celebration, there was a memorial flag display that was put up in Veterans Park. The intention was that it would stay there until Flag Day, which is this coming weekend. Unfortunately, this past weekend, it became necessary to remove the display because people were stealing the flags, which I just find a really sad commentary. I don't even have the words to say how I felt, feel about that. In addition to them, they, their intention is that, was that, they memorialize people who have served our country, who have given their lives so that we can live in freedom here in this country. There were a few flags that had people's names on them, actually, and one of the flags that was stolen, actually, someone's family had purchased, and that flag was stolen as well. So, you know, I can't even imagine who would do that, but I think it's really sad commentary. And again, we had to remove them a week early, but it doesn't mean we're totally discouraged for Veterans Day, try to do them and make sure they're in a more, put in a more secure manner that, that would not happen. But our hope was that people would respect the display itself and not to remove them, but that didn't happen, so it's unfortunate. So just in case people are wondering why it came down a week early, that is why. On a more positive note, I didn't have the opportunity to attend the Arts Festival, but I understand it was extremely well-attended, and for the folks who did go, told me that they had just really a great time. And so I'm glad that it happened, and hopefully next week, my schedule will be so busy that I'll have an opportunity to at least be able to come by. Today, we had a guest here from Kunming, China, am I saying that correctly? So maybe the mayor's gonna talk more about their visit to City Hall. But the other part was that they, while they were here, they went to the Dury Memorial Amy Zion Church, and the gospel ensemble there sang for them. Well, I have some pictures, and I actually did some videos. They were just really enjoying it. And so we found out that they actually, where they're from in China, they actually have a Christian church, and they said that the songs that were being sung for them were quite similar to the songs that they hear. Maybe the beat was the same, the words, you know, were in English, but we had a great time, they had a great time, and so it was just a wonderful opportunity to have them visit today, and to get them to see other parts of the city as well, so it was really wonderful. I'd like to announce, oh, no, I would do want to make one comment, something about that was said today at the rail regarding affordable housing project that's coming to Hamilton Hill. And zero tolerance and affordable housing are not mutually exclusive. We can work on both at the same time. And, you know, the basic needs of people are food, shelter, and clothing, so I would certainly be happy to talk to Mr. Carrada more about that. But just to remind folks, we did have a community meeting, people came out, voiced their concerns as well as their support for the project, and we'll continue to have community meetings as the, as the project moves forward. So, so people know, and I will announce them here at this council, I'll send out emails, put it every way I can think of, Facebook, everything, so that people can come out and just participate as we move forward. On the weekend of June 19th and 20th, it will be Juneteenth, starting with a service at the Vale Cemetery, I believe that starts at 6 o'clock, and then on June 20th, in Central Park. There should be more information on the Hamilton Hill neighborhood, on the Hamilton Hill Art Center website regarding that. Ms. Isaacs mentioned about the block party to be held on Page Street. I just wanted to elaborate a little bit more on that. We are collaborating with the folks on Page Street who are doing a tag sale for that day, so they're having, with a small beginning of a neighborhood sale, it's beginning on that street. So in effort, in effort to work together and just not have all different things all over, we're working collaboratively with that group. So they will be having a tag sale both Saturday and Sunday, but the block party will only be on Saturday as we work together. And while, briefly, also on that day, in Jerry Burrell Park, there's another event that's going on for kids, a fun day. I'm not really sure the start time on that, I think it's like 10:00 in the morning, but it's a day for families, so there's a lot going on in the neighborhood that particular day, so people have so many things to choose from. And I just want to thank everyone that came out tonight to, you know, bring their concerns and also their support for what we're doing in the, in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Riggi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That story that Ms. Porterfield had to say about the flags, it's despicable. Somebody would steal the flag of people that served our country? I, I'm without words. When I heard that this afternoon from her, I don't know what else to say. I would hope if anybody hears this, and anybody that's taken any of these flags would please return them. I don't, I, it's just come to a new low, where somebody would think something like that is okay. Really had a loss on that. A thing that Ms. Vorus brought up about the black, the black bags on the call boxes, I know that when that happened, it was because of Central Dispatch, and it was up in the air, and I don't know, maybe Mayor, you can explain if there has been a decision made on whether to have those or not. But it, there is a use, I believe, for those. Not everyone has a cellphone, and sometimes in an emergency, the call box is the fastest way to get help, as what happened to her. So I don't know if that's a possibility or not, or what the cost associated would be, but I think it's something that, I know it was supposed to be shorter term than it is right now, they've been covered for quite a while now, those call boxes, so maybe you can give us an explanation or look into it, I'd appreciate that. The lot that Quest is requesting or putting a bid on, and that's something I think that we will be considering if there's a bid, and obviously, but I think that's a great use for that piece of vacant land there for community spirit and community development. I think that's what community is all about, so I certainly would support that. It's something that we need. There are some issues, and Mr. Falatiko is aware, Mr. Seber is aware, of bars that are operating that have music way too loud. When people down the street can hear from inside their homes when these issues are going on, I don't think it's acceptable, but it seems like some of these club owners have taken to the attack, and they're threatening to file civil suits against homeowners for harassment. I think that should be the other way around, the harassment part, but I think it's something we have to address, and I know it's on Mr. Falatiko's radar and also on the Police Department's radar, but that's not acceptable. People want to enjoy peace and quiet. One lady I talked to was in her home for 81 years. She lived on the street for 81 years. And yes, that one place has been a bar for a long, long time. When I was a little boy, it was a bar. There wasn't any problems, and it's changed hands a bunch of times until recently with the latest owner, so I don't think the, the business itself is the problem. It's what going on and the way things are happening there that's a problem. It's something we have to address, and people in residential areas obviously deserve better than that. Okay, one announcement, and I'll be done. The Bellevue Preservation Meeting has been moved to Wednesday, June 17th, 7:00 p.m. at St. Paul's Episcopal Church, 1911 Fairview Avenue. Guest speaker will be Building Inspector Eric Schilling. I believe he's the guest speaker at the Mount Pleasant Meeting this coming Thursday. And the good news on the farmer's market scene is, the Bellevue Farmer's Market will be open for the season this coming Thursday, June 11th, from 4:00 to 7:00, and every Thursday thereafter. It's located in the parking lot of Marinatha Ministries Church on the corner of Broadway and Thompson Street, that's the old Immaculate Conception. Debit credit SNAP EBT will be accepted, a 10% coupon with every $10 purchase will be offered. Music on opening day by Deb Fish and the Crowd Pleasers. So if it isn't just for the food, I think to see Deb Fish and the Crowd Pleasers would probably be worth it. I'm gonna go myself. If it's anything like Hootie and the Blowfish, maybe, I'm not sure, but we'll have to check that out. It sounds good, and it's always a good time, and I know last year, especially when it came corn time, the corn that they had there was really good. So I hope people can come out and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Parrazo.
I too want to offer my congratulations for a really successful kids' arts festival. I mean, it was just packed down here. The kids were having a great time. It was a beautiful day, not that every day isn't a beautiful day in Schenectady, but it was an extra beautiful day, and it really is a wonderful event, and it's great to see all the community involvement. I want to remind everybody about the graffiti covering program. When we talk about zero tolerance, we're actually doing something about it, and we're going out every other week to cover graffiti all over the city at no cost to the taxpayers. Please email me or call me. All my contact information is on the city website. Every other week, our youth, along with their probation officers, go out and paint over graffiti. So I can't be the eyes and ears of every neighborhood, I need help also, so feed us those addresses and locations, and we'll go and clean them up. Also, congratulations to the Kennedy Center. I don't, I don't know how we can possibly quantify the amount of work these students do in our community. And it's not fun work, it's really hard work. It's cleaning up garbage, it's painting things, it's, you know, it's really a labor of love for them, and they do it so selflessly, and it's just, it's a wonderful thing to celebrate. I know recently they helped do some painting in the stockade area, and the residents really wanted to thank them personally, so I was glad to see the Kennedy Center, excuse me, the Kenny Center honor tonight. And speaking of lots of things to do, on the weekend of the 19th and 20th, our Pride Festival, Schenectady Pride Festival is coming up on June 20th, so look for information about that, because it's on J Street, I believe it starts at 1:00?
4:00 p.m.
4:00 p.m., sorry. Starts at 4:00 p.m., lots of really, really fun stuff, so come down and show your support for the fabulous diversity we have in our city. And I take out my tattered copy here, because I've had this in my folder since 2011, when it first came out, and I always have been committed to talking about it at least twice a year, because I think it's something that people forget about, and it's very, very important. Back in 2011, our mayor initiated 911-AI, which is 911 with additional information, and this is for dispatchers and first responders to use during a 911 emergency. Again, this is at no cost to anyone. And residents can pre-register information, such as their medical conditions, room locations of elderly people or children, medication list, emergency contracts, contacts, they just need to go to 911ai.com and put in their information. This can be really important with buildings that have multiple floors. It also allows for contact to a caregiver, so if someone calls 911, an elderly parent, this information will allow the medical responders to get in touch with a daughter, a son, you know, a caregiver of some sort. So again, 911ai.com, go in there and put your additional information in. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, no? Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. Councilman Riggi, on the call boxes, again, we had bagged those as part of the switch over to the Central Dispatch. Police chief, in coordination with the fire chief, had sent out letters to all the building owners where those boxes were in place, schools, other municipal buildings, buildings in different neighborhoods. I believe, and we asked them whether they wanted it, didn't want it, what they felt in terms of their alarm system, and I believe that we've had zero response from any of the building owners, is why it's moved, or we thought we would have some response, we'd kind of negotiate with it, and the command staff is still reviewing that. Last week, we announced $500,000 in neighborhood-based home rehab projects, thanks to a new grant and funding received by the city. The neighborhood home renovation work is funded through a $400,000 grant received from the New York State Affordable Housing Corporation. We're using an additional $100,000 in federal home funds for the Department of Housing and Urban Development. And the city will partner with the Community Land Trust to renovate affordable housing in Schenectady with special focus on existing renovate affordable housing in Schenectady with special focus on existing owner-occupied homes that need to correct basic structural defects which negatively impact the residents and hopefully will prolong the useful life of these homes. Schenectady Police Department also was just a recipient of two bulletproof vests for our canine dogs, Koenig and Vert. This vest interest in Canines Incorporated, Margaret and George Purcell made the donation of $1,900 to the vest interest in Canines Incorporated, which in turn awarded it to the department. The vest will be embroidered with the sentiment in memory of my pets who brought joy to my life. And we also welcome Ferocity, which is relocating from San Diego, California, to office space in the first floor of the New York Biz Lab at 251 State Street in downtown Schenectady. You know, it's, some members of the community, I think, will continue the debate over the host benefit fees by the casino here in Schenectady, I look forward to that. You know, people who take positions of convenience or do limited analytical review distort really what's out there. You know, the new casino in Seneca County includes really the following incentives approved by the Seneca County IDA. They're getting $16 million in sales tax exemption, they're getting a waiver of $3.35 million in mortgage recording tax exemption, and a pilot agreement which reduces the property taxes to, from down to 50% of the full taxes in year one with increases over the life of the pilot agreement. This agreement provides roughly $13 million in savings to the developer. The IDA benefits to the project in Seneca County total more than $32 million. Now, the host benefit in Schenectady, we're going to get 100% of sales tax, 100% of mortgage and recording tax, and 100% of property tax. The direct payment to the host community, which is the city of Schenectady and also Schenectady County, is expected to be at $8.2 million. It's $4.1 million to the city, $4.1 million to the county, and that's in accordance with a formula established by state law. In addition, Schenectady stands to benefit from approximately $6.7 million in taxes each year from the property tax and also hotel tax, which commonly referred to as bed tax, and then there'll be additional sales tax. The annual estimated tax payment to the city, city of Schenectady and Schenectady County is expected to be $14.9 million. You know, the casino in Seneca County is expected to get $2.2 million, a little over that, in taxes each year under the pilot, and $3.9 million to the town of Tyree and to Seneca County. Our deal is much better. You know, Schenectady is going to project to bring $14.9 million plus new property tax at the adjacent project at Mohawk Harbor. Schenectady is a much better deal, and, you know, there was a few payments that they made toward ambulance and fire trucks, but those are small insignificant amounts in looking at the total package. And so don't let critics fool you. The same critics who wanted us to get $0 because they actively campaigned against the sighting of the casino in Schenectady County. You know, this is a $300 million project that happened because a lot of people worked together, we're going to make it work, it's going to have a significant impact on our property taxes and other revenues that are going to come into this community, and, you know, I thank the council for your general broad-based support on this, the city staff, you know, the developers that worked on this, and I look forward to defending my record on this against, you know, the just flawed analysis where people who campaigned against it want to stand up here every time and just point out an agreement that is really good, they want to somehow take the good things that are happening and distort it and put a bad spin on it. But, Madam President, I look forward to working with you as we continue to do the great things in this community.
Thank you. I also just wanted to comment on the kids' arts fest, I think it's, I've been involved with that now for probably over 20 years, and it was just phenomenal this weekend. I know Mr. Riggi was there, others were as well, and I really commend Karen Johnson, she is the key person behind this, and she's got a good team of people who help her, and of course, a lot of the organizations volunteered their time to create arts activities for the young people, and I think everybody really had a good time. Also, Jazz on J kicked off this past Thursday, so every Thursday throughout the summer, noon to 1:30, right on J Street, some very talented musicians, and I encourage you, if you've got the time, it's a lot of fun, and really encourage you to come out. And lastly, Mr. Mayor, happy birthday.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point then, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, Mr. Mutiver, and seconded by Mr. Riggi, all in favor? Aye. We are adjourned.